Seven thirty, continue public hearing, conservation subdivision, design seventeen dash oh one Highlander Estates. They have a request to continue to February's meeting. The action deadline to February twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Seven forty-five?
Okay. Let's take a motion to continue to February sixth at seven forty-five. Action deadline to February twenty-eighth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? That's off. So we have a little opening. We'll have a discussion on some proposed zoning changes. Come up, Shelley.
Hi, I'm Shelley. You're the Director of Public Health. For those that you who don't know me, I've been talking to me Valerie have been talking about some proposed changes that the Board of Health would like to entertain or have you guys entertain at this year's town meeting. There are changes to the zoning bylaw, section six point nine point three. It's the body art overlay district. So what we're looking to do is take out cosmetic tattooing out of the definitions and add it to the personal service shop. And the reason being is that cosmetic tattooing is kind of an up and coming service that beauty salons are offering. And it's right now in Wilmington, you can't do it because it well, you could do it if you were in the specific body art overlay district zone. So no one's really going to open up a single cosmetic tattooing shop. They're going to do this in a salon that's already existing. So I've had quite a few artists call me wanting to operate in the salons that are already existing in Wilmington, but they can't because they're not in the body art overlay district. So I've had to tell them, no. So a few of them are like, well, how can we get this changed? So I said, well, let's talk about maybe we can get it changed under zoning. So the Board of Health currently regulates all body art or tattooing, if you want to call it. We have the regulations, so we would be enforcing it. We would regulate it. We're just trying to allow businesses to expand and in Wilmington to allow this. So if you guys have any questions?
What is the body art overlay district?
Yeah.
I didn't know we had one.
Yeah.
We do. It's up, there's a.
Ballerville Street.
Ballerville, yeah. It's a small section of Ballerville Street. But Shelley, maybe it's helpful if you tell them what cosmetic tattooing is.
Yeah.
Because that's.
Yep. So yeah, cosmetic tattooing, it's permanent makeup. It's for tattooing in eyebrows, partial eyebrows. It's called microblading. They can do eyelashes. You can do hairline. So it's mostly, it's always from the chest up. So it's not done anywhere else but on the face. And you can't do, you can do the lips. Some women like to do permanent lip liner. And cosmetic tattooing also has more serious applications such as improving the appearance of women that have gone through breast, if they had to have breast reconstruction due to double mastectomy, they can do tattooing for that. And that's all considered cosmetic tattooing.
Is that definition, um, always somewhere?
Yes, it is. So under the Board of Health regulations, we actually have a definition of cosmetic tattooing. And it's, I'll read it to you, it's really short. It's cosmetic tattooing, also known as permanent cosmetics, micro pigment implantation or dermal pigmentation, means the implantation of permanent pigment around the eyes, lips, and cheeks of the face and hair imitation. So it's pretty short.
So the idea is to take it out of the body art section and put it into kind of the regulars, three point five point ten, personal service shop, like a beauty salon, nail salon, add it to those types of uses.
Especially where it's from the neck up.
Mm-hmm.
It's more cosmetic anyway with those type of services. So I do not have a problem with that.
But we would be adding the definition as well as the personal allowing it in the personal services shop?
We could.
We could add the definition, yeah.
There's no problem with adding. We should add a lot more definitions so we could start with that one.
Exactly.
And we could just follow along and have the same, our same, just mimic our definition.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we can live it up.
Good, sounds good. No vote or anything?
No.
No.
So what will happen? You're going to put something forward?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll work with together. Thank you.
We'll give you our support. We got five minutes? Which one?
Use this clock.
The waiver, my buddy in the back there?
Um, the waiver's there. This one?
You got three minutes.
We can do it.
This one?
Give a chance to review?
Yeah. This is eighty Industrial Way.
Yes.
Rear.
In the rear.
Yeah, we got front and back, front building and the back building.
You guys got any questions? Good? Good?
Yeah.
Okay, take a motion to waive, say, planning view for eighty Industrial Way as posed.
So moved. Second.
You're good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks for the time.
All right, take care of yourself. Where's your partner, Chris? When did you do that?
She's sick.
Oh.
We told her not to come in.
Oh, that's good, that's good. I don't want to get sick. Oh, so we did have a seven forty, so you knew. What's that? I got seven forty. So we have public hearing, eighty-one G application amendment seventeen dash oh two, twenty-one Palmfret Road, map eighty-four, parcel fifty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the Board. For the record, Mike, the new house, I represent the owner, Wheel Development LLC. Good evening. I'm sorry?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have some close-up shots of the plan that I have on the board over here that the board might find convenient when you refer to. Anyone in the audience that would like a copy as well? So, Mr. Chairman, before you want an application to amend a, an eighty-one G decision that was issued by this board in July of two thousand sixteen, it involved the construction of Palmfret Road, which is a side street off of Bernstein, which is off of McDonald Road. As you can see on the plan, Mr. Chairman, if I could make reference here, the owner of this property is the owner of twenty-one Palmfret, which the house is substantially complete, but work still needs to be done to Palmfret Road in accordance with the conditions of the eighty-one G approval. That same owner constructed and sold a spec house on this lot right here, which actually had a legal address of Fort Bernstein, but it does have frontage on Palmfret Road. And that same owner owns two Bernsteins. And all of these are not particularly relevant to the eighty-one G approval. The eighty-one G approval was for this lot right here at twenty-one Palmfret. So there are essentially three things that we're asking the board to consider amending. The first one is that the completion of the road in accordance with the eighty-one G approval was supposed to be and was expected to be complete by July of two thousand seventeen. That hasn't happened, so we're asking the board to consider extending that eighty-one G approval through July of two thousand eighteen. And we'll get into a couple of the reasons for that extension and for the delay in the construction. Secondly, we're also asking that the board consider approving a change to the plan. And as the board will recall, the decision specifically says that any changes in the plan have to get the prior approval of this board. And that's the purpose of that handout, which I'll get into in a moment. And then the third thing that we're asking is for one of the conditions which pertains to the release of a certificate of occupancy and the release of the bond that the DPW required to bifurcate them and have two different triggering events. So just to go back to those last couple of items, Mr. Chairman, the portion of the plan that's in front of you reflects that the radius that was proposed on the original plan and which was approved by this board at the intersection of Bernstein Road and Palmfret Road was ten feet. Making reference to the, to the plan, Mr. Chairman, as part of the development and the construction of Palmfret Road, I've highlighted in green the location of two new utility poles that were installed by Verizon at the request of the builder and my client, the owner. And the purpose of them was, you know, to develop twenty-one Palmfret and Fort Bernstein. And those poles were installed as my client expected, as this board expected, and as common sense would dictate. However, at the same time that Verizon went and installed those poles, they also relocated some poles along Bernstein Road. And the pole at the intersection of Bernstein and Palmfret, not only did they relocate the pole, but they relocated the guy wire. And inexplicably Verizon put it, the pole closer to the traveled right of way and put the guy wire still within the proposed traveled and paved right of way on Bernstein. So in other words, Verizon has really set us back here. My client had begun, I'm sorry, the builder had begun on behalf of my client contacting Verizon back as long ago as March of two thousand sixteen. And quite frankly, the builder was kind of cruising along thinking that he would get the certificate of occupancy and then finalize some of the drainage and the roadway and the curbing. And that was just incorrect. This board required by its two thousand and sixteen decision for the road in its entirety to be completed and for an as-built plan to be submitted before a certificate of occupancy would issue. In hindsight, particularly in light of what the additional challenges are here that Verizon has, I guess, created or exacerbated, we're asking that the board consider authorizing the release of a certificate of occupancy when the binder, the curbing, and the drainage systems are all complete to the satisfaction of the town engineer and the planning director. And then subsequent to that, possibly, the completion of that intersection where that pole and new guy wire have been installed by Verizon, that the final coat of paving and that that little corner, if necessary, would be done after the certificate of occupancy, bearing in mind that in accordance with the decision, the town is holding a surety to the order of thirty thousand, thereabouts, a little over thirty thousand dollars for the completion. And we would fully expect that that bond wouldn't be released until everything's a hundred percent complete and the as-built plans would be submitted by the, by the engineer to the town engineer. So we have discussed this. I know there was some correspondence in the file from the engineering office. We've addressed it, I believe, to the satisfaction of the engineer and the director of planning. And I think what I've just outlined is acceptable to both of those departments if it's acceptable to the board.
Okay. What we got from here, the, as of January second, none of the drainage improvements for Palmfret Road have been installed, nor has installation even commenced. The approved drainage system is an integral component of the overall roadway improvement project and critical aspect of the permit application, as is stated in the Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one G. After the city of town has adopted an official map, no person shall open a way for public use unless the grading, servicing, and drainage of such way have been approved by such planning board. The Engineering Division is not aware of any past practice where an occupancy permit has been issued prior to the installation of a roadway drainage system for our eighty-one G application, as drainage is typically installed prior to the binder course of pavement. The Engineering Division does not recommend an amendment to condition seven of the planning board decision as suggested in the letter. Remove the requirement of completion of the road. As essential drainage improvements have been ignored to this point, the drainage system is part of the roadway improvement scope of work, considering the drainage system was designed to collect runoff from the portion of the roadway that was constructed. The Engineering Division is extremely concerned with the potential for ponding within the roadway and adverse impact to adjourning abutting properties. This ponding may create a safety hazard for any new resident as well as impede public services and emergency vehicles. So I guess we need a little compromise or we'll go with, you'll put in the drainage?
Right. And just from that question, Mr. Chairman, I can see that you completely get what I was trying to explain. Wasn't sure that I'd gotten it through.
That's okay.
So, yeah, we agree with the town engineer that the drainage should be done. The binder's already done. We're just asking to bifurcate, you know, one as-built can be submitted when the drainage and the curbing is done, and then another as-built when the final coat. And would also like to get the chance to work with the town to try and get some leverage on Verizon to move that guy wire.
I don't see a problem with that. Good. So what do we need to do here? Is anyone here for this issue? Good. I want to make sure I hear that back. So we have a draft. You seen the draft?
I did see one by email of whoever picked this. Thank you.
So we prepared this draft. I used track changes to show you what the original decision said. And then the changes are shown either crossed out or underlined for the new additions. And it really kind of, there's, I guess, three, three conditions that change. Well, first of all, the request to extend the construction deadline for the roadway improvements. I mean, this is something that the board may want to talk about. It was, we had talked about with the applicant's representative, a July, end of July date. It could also be one year from, from when this is issued, but that sort of brings you into the winter again. So we wanted this done sooner rather than later. So we thought, you know, end of July seemed reasonable. That's condition number two. Condition number three, this talks about the modification of the plans, anticipating, you know, trouble with that Verizon pole. We're making an exception for the curb radius at the corner of Palmfret and Bernstein, which may be reduced at the discretion of the Director of Planning and the Town Engineer, subject to final coordination of a utility pool at the intersection. So we'd, we'd like to have the ability to reduce that if it's necessary. And it would be reduced to what you see on this diagram right here.
It's been reduced from six point five to ten?
From ten to six point five. So it bumps out.
Kind of the reverse of what I would have thought.
Mike, when Verizon, if your client contacts Verizon, what is their response? Is there no response or as far as moving?
He's got a response. The email chain that I reviewed between the builder and Verizon was, was quite recent, within the last week. And within the last two to four weeks, my understanding was that Verizon had agreed to remove the old guy wire. And I'm not real clear on what they were saying about relocating the new guy wire. Because as I mentioned, the new guy wire is further into Palmfret Road. But in any event, the builder had been informed that by March, Verizon expected to get some people out there. Then I saw a, a new email string as recent as last week, and the woman from Verizon basically was informing the builder, no, we've checked that out and we don't plan to make any changes out there. So we're hopeful that in concert with the town, because frankly, we would just as soon stick to the plan with the, with the ten-foot radius, even though from a public safety standpoint, it can work, as I understand it, is, you know, with as much of a difference as six and a half feet. But with that said, we'd like to stick to the plan. We think it's better. And we feel now that we've vetted this better with the planning department and the town engineer, we're hoping to team up to try and get to somebody at Verizon. Parenthetically, the, the communication on the email string that I saw last week from the contact person at Verizon, that woman supposedly retired December thirty-first. So it might be, might be good to make a new point of contact over there.
Is this, this line right here, is that the old guy wire?
Let me get my perspective. Yes. I brought a photo in case you, you had that question, by the way, because the new guy wire can be seen on that print, which would fall outside the curbing with the six and a half foot radius. To give you a sense of where the existing guy wire is, I asked the builder to go take some photos today, which I'm happy to, to share with the board. So, and I'll, I'll pass these around. This right here is the new guy wire. This right here is the old guy wire. So if we were to make the move to a six and a half foot radius, the paving would go around the new guy wire. We're trying to get this guy wire removed, this one relocated, so that we can stick to the original radius of ten. So just, the guy wire with the, with the yellow tag on it, that is the old one to be removed. The newer one is closer to that double pole, further away from Palmfret.
The next condition that would be changed is condition seven, the new seven. And this is talking to the timing of, of what needs to be done for occupancy. So prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for twenty-one Palmfret Road, final as-built plans for the construction of twenty-one Palmfret in form and formats acceptable to the town engineer, I should say town engineer, shall be submitted to the town engineer and director of planning, and all roadway improvements shall be completed, with the exception of final paving and intersection curb radius, which shall be completed prior to July thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. So everything needs to be done, with the exception of the final paving and the curbing at the intersection, prior to occupancy. And then the new condition nine is for the rest of it. Prior to the release of surety, the final course of pavement and intersection curb radius, there's a typo, shall be completed, and final as-built plans for the roadway improvement project in form and format acceptable to the town engineer shall be submitted to the Engineering Division and Director of Planning Conservation. All paving must be inspected by the Engineering Division, and the applicant shall give reasonable notice prior to commencement of work.
In, in the letter, it said he would offer to increase the bond from thirty-three, almost thirty-four thousand to fifty. Did the engineer, town engineer find that necessary?
We didn't think that was necessary, since we have the bond for the work to begin with.
Okay.
We just wouldn't release the bond until everything's complete.
Okay. Good? That's good. So how we want to do this, we're going to take, we'll close the public hearing and we'll accept the amended conditions as stated.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So you're good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay, we had a seven forty-five, continual site plan review seventeen dash fourteen, stormwater management permit seventeen dash twelve for one Burlington Ave. Map thirty, parcels thirteen and eighteen. We have a letter here on behalf of Big Joe LLC. We hereby request a continuance of public hearing until the March meeting as we begin our proceedings with the Conservation Commission. So I want to go to March. So we got?
Seven forty-five?
Okay. So we'll take a motion to extend the public hearing to March sixth at seven forty-five and extend the action deadline to March thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Mike, I'm not, I can't make the March hearing. I'll be out of town. So I don't know if that makes a difference or not. What's that?
So moved. Second.
Okay. You want to do some Board of Appeals? Oh, you got to seven fifty on that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Tell me when you're ready.
Me?
Tell me when you're ready, Shelley. Okay, we have a seven fifty public hearing, preliminary subdivision seventeen dash oh one, three sixty-two Middle Sixth Avenue, map eighty-nine, parcel six A. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mark Pobrowski, Council for Bettering LLC. I'm with Ben Oscar. Thank you for. Thank you for having a draft decision ready this evening. We've looked it over and seems pretty straightforward to us, but I'm sure there'll be some questions.
They haven't seen it yet.
Ah, okay. Well, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
Ben Osgood, I'm the engineer for the project.
Yeah, why don't you walk through your plans here? Did you bring a board?
This is for the property 362 Middle 6th Ave. Existing 2.8 acre parcel of land. It has one small structure existing up in the north corner. Previously had a, um, kind of a retail business, single-story brick building that was removed a couple of years ago. It's adjacent to the railroad tracks, uh, right at the intersection with Middle 6th Ave. Forget the name of the street. There's a couple of residential properties here, um, bordering on the north and the west. The site's zone, general business, the zone line actually follows the property line here, comes down the railroad tracks. Oh, I'm sorry. So if I sit at this angle, I have to put my glasses on to see the plan, so. So essentially, what we propose to do is just put in a small cul-de-sac bulb and divide the property into two lots, uh, as a preliminary subdivision. So we've done the preliminary layout. The roadway as it, as it is shown in this plan conforms to the dimensional regulations in the regulations for the, uh, for the zoning and subdivision control. Did have a question about the lots and the areas that, um, are, are beyond the lot area that's narrower than 50 feet. We, we knew that it, they met the requirements, but I did put them in red here. The lots, as they exist, even with the, um, reduction in area on those, uh, those, those small areas do comply with the zoning. It's 20,000 square foot required zoning. Our lots have 23 and 38. We have the required frontages. We've shown the offsets to the, um, to the different properties. Uh, there's a 50-foot rear yard setback line against residential properties, and this one is a little an error. It should look like that is shown right there. Somehow it got changed on that sheet, but, uh, that would be adjusted in the definitive plan. I think it's a condition of the approval. Then we've shown a grading plan. So it's a 2% slope up from Middle 6th Ave to the end of the cul-de-sac. We've shown some, some drainage, a small drainage pond. It would tie into the drainage that's located on Middle 6th Ave. We would extend the water line up the road. That'd be an eight-inch water line with a hydrant at the end. A small drainage pond, like I said, next to the railroad tracks would provide the stormwater treatment and storage. And then we have a basic profile, which just shows the road, 2% slope from the edge of Middle 6th Ave up to the cul-de-sac. So, it is a preliminary plan. Obviously, their, the planning board, as we move through the definitive process, may have comments. We may make adjustments to address those comments. So we're just here tonight to, uh, get the board's agreement that it meets with the dimensional requirements, and then we'll move on to the definitive.
I think it would be appropriate if I put this application in context.
Sure.
As you know, the town meeting voted last month to change the zoning in this district to eliminate the possibility of, uh, hospital sanatorium and to allow it only in other districts. The zoning act says that if we submit a preliminary plan prior to the vote of town meeting, we freeze the zoning in effect at the time of the vote, in other words, the old zoning, if the preliminary plan is followed within seven months by a definitive plan, which we intend to do, and if that definitive plan is ultimately endorsed. So the purpose of the preliminary plan submitted is to take advantage of the statutory freeze that will allow us eight years to build out under the zoning in effect at the time, uh, we submitted the plan, which was the old zoning. We still need a special permit from Board of Appeals, and we intend to apply for that shortly. I think we still need site plan approval from this board, and, um, we will be asking in the event that, uh, that, uh, it's, it becomes necessary for a reasonable accommodation under the Federal Fair Housing Act amendments of 1988 and the Americans with Disabilities Act. So that's, that gives you some context. I wanna make it clear that at some point in time, we would rather see some waivers than to disrupt the neighborhood with that much pavement. And we don't wanna necessarily have that conversation tonight, but we'll work with Valerie to find an, uh, an opportunity to come back perhaps at the end of one of your meetings in the next month or so, to have a, a conversation about that.
Okay. First, uh, let me read into the record the comments from town engineer. Unless the applicant has more recent knowledge of such a butters, the owners of the following abutting parcels do not appear to be correct. Map 70 lot 26, map 79 lot 29, separated by Middle 6 right of way, should be added to the plan. Map 88 lot 13, separated by Middle 6 right of way, should be added to the plan. Map 89 lot 5A. Map 89 lot 7, separated by railroad right of way, should be added to the plan. Map 89 lot 7A, separated by the railroad right of way, and map 89 lot 8, separated by the railroad right of way, those should be added to the plan. Following should be addressed during the preliminary subdivision process. There is a drain line crossing the front of the subject parcel from 360 Middle 6 Ave, map 79 lot 28, which connects to drainage located in Middle 6th Avenue. The applicant should investigate the existence of any easement or legal rights that may be associated with this drain line. This may be addressed during definitive subdivision process. Major features of the land should be shown as such. A walls, several stone walls and concrete block walls are located on the property and appear to be shown on the plans. However, they are not specifically identified. The applicant's engineers should label the walls appropriately. Monuments, the plans do not depict any survey monuments used as a basis for correlation of field and record information. Trees graded in six-inch caliper. The plans depict only one tree located on the site as being graded in six inches. Additional trees graded in six inches were observed to be located on the site. Wooded areas, the plans indicate an edge of tree line, which does not appear to reflect the edge of tree canopy observed at the site. These items should be addressed during the preliminary subdivision process. Sewage disposal, the plans depict several existing onsite sanitary disposal systems that are located on the property. It appears that the existing system located on proposed lot 2 will be retained and maintained for use with the existing building located on this lot. The board of health should be consulted to review the capacity of the current systems with respect to the potential change in use of the existing building. The plans depict several soil test pit locations on site. However, no soil data logs were provided. As such, we defer comment related to the viability of the soils to sustain an acceptable onsite disposal system for lot 1 and its intended use to the board of health. These items may be addressed during the definitive subdivision process. Drainage, the plans propose a small detention basin to be located at the front right portion of the parcel. No calculations have been provided related to the drainage design. Therefore, we cannot comment on the adequacy of the proposed mitigation measures. However, the proposed basin shall meet the standard design criteria of the DEP stormwater policy for use as a best practices for this project. The applicant's representative is encouraged to review the volume 2, chapter 2, structural BMP specification for the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook of the policy and select an appropriate BMP for collecting runoff from the contributing drainage area prior to advancing to the definitive stage. We refer to comments related to the proposed drainage design until such time as a complete drainage study is submitted for our review. The proposed drainage design indicates a connection to the town existing drainage infrastructure in Middle 6th Avenue. The applicant's engineers should review and analyze the existing drainage system network to demonstrate that the capacity integrity will not be compromised as a result of additional flow from the proposed development. This may be addressed during definitive subdivision process. Zoning compliance, section 5.2.1 of the zoning regulations excludes the area of the lot where the distance between lot lines is less than 50 feet. As such, lot 1 should be reviewed for area compliance, since a portion of the lot on the southwest side appears to have a width of less than 50 feet. You wanna comment on that one?
This is what I spoke about here, that we had done the calculations in our office, but we just hadn't included them on the plan.
Okay.
And they, uh, we adjusted it today, and I emailed a PDF of this plan, and they do comply even when you subtract those areas.
In addition to 50-foot, uh, side yard setback requirement abutting residential zone land, the area shown as map 79 lot 26 does not appear to be drawn correctly and should be revised. The applicant should consult with the building inspector as to the application of this bylaw regulation. You know, so with that?
He's correct in that it's not shown properly on this plan. Somehow it was changed from existing conditions, which is shown the way it should be drawn. So we'll correct that on the definitive plan.
Okay. These items should be addressed during preliminary subdivision process. The profiles of the existing grades and approximate proposed finished grades of the roadway, drain and sewer utilities shall be shown. Design plans depict a roadway profile on sheet four of the design plans. However, the profile lacks labeling of the existing and proposed grade lines for the roadway. The existing and proposed grades indicate along the datum lines at the station locations do not correlate with the graphic depiction of the profile. In addition, the slope at the cul-de-sac terminus is excessive and would make driveway access to lot 1 difficult. There are no proposed drainage structures included in the profile as required. There is no proposed water main shown in the profile. These items should be addressed during the preliminary subdivision process. The engineering division recommends that the required landscape buffer to residential property be shown on the design plans per zoning bylaw. This should be addressed during the preliminary subdivision process. The applicant should provide a list of waivers requested for the project. This may be addressed during definitive subdivision process. The applicant is advised to contact the town water distribution consultant to determine if adequate water pressure and flow exists for the proposed project demands. This may be addressed during definitive subdivision process. The existing gas main in Middle 6th Avenue shall be illustrated, size, material, location on the design plans. This may be addressed during definitive subdivision process. Question on any of these? Seen these?
Uh, very straightforward.
Okay. The board of, any questions?
Well, I just, I guess I had a question on the drainage. The engineer picked up on it, but it looks like you're tying into the drainage, the existing drainage in the public way in Middle 6th?
Correct. That's what the plan would be.
So, and then it goes into the detention pond. So the water going in would be water from Middle 6th Ave as well as water from the development?
No, we would put our water into our detention pond. We would probably do some infiltration as well. That's what part, some of the test pit analysis we did, uh, was for, for detention areas and infiltration areas. And then it would go into the Middle 6th street or Middle 6th Ave drainage system. So we would make sure in our post-development condition, we weren't putting any more water in than is going in there in the pre-development, and that's what our drainage calc's would do in our drainage design.
Great.
The presently, the whole site flows by sheet flow right down onto Middle 6th Ave into that catch basin there?
I don't know. I mean, I'm sure you could look into the size of the trunk line on Middle 6th and all.
Right.
Good? Good?
I have a question. Lot 1, you're showing the existing garage, or it's in a residential apartment? Is that what it is? Yeah. Oh, is that lot 2? Sorry. That's remaining, that's why you're subdividing the property?
No, we actually don't know what's gonna happen with that building. It was constructed. It's been never granted an occupancy permit, so, um...
You're not sure, you might not just take it out?
Don't know.
Okay. That'll have to be determined in the definitive, I would assume. All right. It's one question I have. It's a nice one, anyway.
Okay. If you want, I guess you can explain the process. Okay, we wanna take a second and explain the process here, what we're doing, and then I'll open it up to people in the audience. Go ahead.
Okay. So this is, this is a preliminary subdivision plan. And the proposal, I don't know if, if you guys have seen it, we can kinda pass a plan back there. But the proposal is a small roadway with a cul-de-sac and splitting the existing parcel into two lots. And so there's, there's no proposed use, there's no proposed buildings at this point. It's just breaking the lot into two pieces. Right? So at this stage with the preliminary submission, um, the plan isn't as developed as it will be in the next phase, which is the definitive plan, which will show all the information that we're looking for. So during this preliminary phase, we ask, um, well, we sort of, we ask questions, we tell them what we wanna see in the next phase. That's gonna be all the information that we're looking for. It's more formal, and this plan, the approval of this plan doesn't actually approve anything to be built. It just says what we're looking for in the next definitive subdivision plan, which would be then their approval to build something, um, which is, um, a roadway or, or whatever. So I hope that kinda helps with what we're doing tonight. I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, uh, I'll give you a chance to speak. Just please come to the microphone, state your name and your address, and let's try not to be repetitive if we can. Go ahead.
Good evening, happy new year, everyone. I'm Jay Burns, name is Henry Rowe. I just had a couple of questions. Is my statement...
That, that lot is, carries a dual zone, about 10 feet off of my property line is considered R10. Is the 50-foot setbacks from that break where it's R10 to general business, or is it from prop, my property line to, you know, as a whole? That was never rezoned, complete general business? I was just curious as to, and if that impacts where, um, the proposed buildings and, you know, with that? That was my first question. My second question is that it was prior to it being commercial storefronts, Dunkin' Donuts back in the day, it was an etching firm. So in that area, we know that there's a contamination. I would hope that the planning board would consider doing extensive, you know, nothing over the top, but, um, necessary chemical testing of the, the ground in that area to ensure that, um, there's no, by the construction, there's not gonna be any spread of contamination into, 'cause we're right on, residents are right on top of that lot. So I would respectfully ask if, um, that could be a consideration going forth in, in the process. And then the other...
Do you know if there's any contamination on file in that lot?
Um, I don't know. It'd be something that the board of health, when they're looking at the septic and, um, when they're reviewing the subdivision plan, that, um, they would have a little bit more knowledge on if there's anything there.
Right, 'cause the building itself was the etching firm that they converted. Um, so now that that building has been razed, um, I think it would be appropriate in considering new construction to actually reconsider that, reconsider that, um, especially since, um, the buildings, the industry across the street was...
The building that had the pizza place in it and stuff was an etching building?
It was, back in the 50s.
I think having a gas station adjacent to it was a red flag. That would trigger some, some testing right off the bat 'cause of the gas station.
Some soil, worms, water testing of soil and...
That'd be pretty scary.
And I think the only thing that I would, um, I would ask for consideration is, um, the buffering along the property lines, ensuring that there's some sort of greenery that doesn't lose its foliage throughout the year.
Yep, that would be something we'd clearly discuss.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Next.
Joe Xavier, 40th Avenue. Uh, I just have one question. So for the preliminary plan...
Okay. So, even the comments from the town engineer, it's basically for the next phase?
Well, some of them were for the next phase and some were for this phase. He'll make an adjustment to the plan to those comments.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's no, there's nothing there that he can't meet.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking, yes. Anyone else?
Hi, Michelle Feeny, 5 Arlene Ave. I just want to know what would prevent this from happening? Is it just the special, if they don't receive that special permit, can this be prevented?
I can't speak for the Board of Appeals?
No, but, but just the process. It's more of a process question. If that gets turned down, or they don't approve the special permit, then they can't build there. Is that, I, I'm trying to simplify it.
I would say, I would say, I don't know. I guess it would go to court.
Really? Now, why would it go to court?
I guess, I'm not a lawyer. I guess I can't answer that, so.
But I'm saying for the, for the Board of Appeals, if they, they just, it's a vote, correct?
They would have to have a good reason to turn it down.
I think having a town full of people that show up at a meeting to voice their opinions are pretty good.
Well, that's not necessarily the case. You need to have legal standing on your side.
You what?
You need to have legal standing on your side, so.
And how do we, what, what do you?
They're not violating any of the zoning bylaws, so.
You mean as far as a protected class? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes. Now, there's reasons.
And I thought I saw a draft of tonight's meeting saying that you've already approved it and it's been post-dated.
We haven't approved anything yet.
But I saw a draft that basically, like, did you have a second draft that you didn't approve it in? Just.
What do you mean?
In other, in other words, I've seen a copy of a draft approving this dated January 5th, and I'm just, you know, per the me, it was almost, it was post-dated. So, I'm just wondering, do you do a contingency plan when there's two? Like, do you have, we didn't approve it and we did approve it? Or did you just do a draft for the approval?
I don't, I'm not quite following the question.
So, I, I prepared a draft for tonight. Maybe that's what you're referencing.
I think so. I'm, I'm just wondering, but it was dated January 5th?
Right. So, we issue, we issue our letters on Fridays.
Yep.
So, the draft that I prepared for the board to consider tonight, which includes all of the conditions that the town engineer comment, commented on, that is, is dated January 5th. So, that's maybe what you saw.
I think that is, and I'm just wondering, do you also do a second one, not approving it? Because it seems to me that you came in with a predisposed, or need to approve it.
Nothing's predisposed.
But is there a second one that doesn't approve it?
No. Why would we disapprove something that met zoning?
Well, because there's a lot of conditions and, and so forth, and even the soil.
There are always standard conditions.
Okay. And, and what about the contamination of the soil?
What about it?
If there's contamination, they'd be required legally to report it to Mass D E P and clean it up.
Okay.
There are rules set by Massachusetts Department of the Environment, and they'd have to do soils borings, do testing of the soil, do testing of the groundwater, make sure that it's all clean and clear. If it is, there's nothing that needs to be done. If there's a contaminant that doesn't meet the regulations of the zoning, or Mass D E P, they'd be obligated, and there's a timeframe for that. They don't have to clean it up in a week, you know? They have a certain timeframe to get that all cleaned up. And a lot of that can be part of the development process to do that cleanup, if there is contaminants. But they have to do the testing and demonstrate there is.
Remember, the planning board rules on the planning outline. We do not, we do not rule on his, his business plan. So, we're ruling on that. So, ahead of time, they submit a plan that's reviewed by the department, right? It's discussed. They come up with a draft sometimes, not all the time. It depends on what, on how complex it is. This is kind of pretty basic, this preliminary plan. So, that's why we draft up, there's a lot of standard conditions. So, you give the applicant the ability to look at those prior to this. So, if he has an issue with something, he can bring it up. He, him or her can bring it up, and it can be either addressed. We can tell him, you know, hotline, this is how we feel.
Quick question. When was the plan submitted? And I know there's, I could look it up, but if you could tell me, that'd be great.
It was submitted sometime in December. I forget. Before we had, before, before we had the joint.
After veteran purchased it.
Before we had the joint meeting with the finance committee for the special town meeting, so before December 16th, I can tell you.
That's fine. No, I just, I just thought it was odd that they purchased it November 27th, and there's already a plan. But, okay. Thank you.
Well, again, as said at that meeting, you know, the business people, they protected their rights.
The plan was submitted November 27th.
Well, the plan was submitted the same day it was?
It was submitted the 27th of November.
That's, that was in the real estate context.
Wouldn't know that, so.
It's in the real estate context.
All right. Good.
Hi, Joe Burns, 9 Pine Wood Road. I just had a question on the septic systems. There's three tanks existing on the property, I believe. And we're talking about only one, I think, in the northwest corner, if I'm correct. That's the one we're, we're talking about tonight. I just wondered, the other two, first, will they be utilized during the, after the build is over or no? Will they be removed?
They will.
They will?
They'll be, they'll be abandoned.
Okay. And the one up in the northwest corner, is that, is that a pump-up? Because it, it seems to be higher in grade than, than they just, are the buildings of the site where you're going to put the buildings? And will that be vented when it's pumped up?
Yeah, again, that'll all come in.
I'm just curious as to whether the designer knew.
No, it, that current septic system in that building do not have a certificate of compliance issued, and there are issues with completing it. So, there are things left to be done, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
I thought you guys were going to use the septic on the other corner, the gas station inside, but in the back. Is that where the, the septic existing?
That, that building has a septic system, and if that building remains, we will most likely utilize that septic system and make sure it complies with the Board of Health regulations. Anything that's constructed will have a newer system installed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We'll want to see those details when they submit the next definitive plan.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else?
Well, Val Lane. I did look at the plans because they were available to us right after they were submitted. I came down and looked at them. The cul-de-sac, is that big enough for a fire? When, when in the process does the fire and safety officers of our town look at the subdivision?
They forwarded the plans.
What?
Even at this phase, they forwarded the plans.
I, I'm just letting the people know that, in my opinion, and I thought I saw somewhere that the cul-de-sac was not big enough for a large fire truck, because there's going to be a large building there potentially with 48 beds in it, so.
I don't think so. I think it's big enough.
Yeah, it meets our regulations.
Okay.
And the fire department, we have C D T R, which is Community Development Technical Review. Some of you were there, where all the departments meet together.
I saw that.
Yeah, so, fire was there, and they had no, no issues.
The other question, Mr. Burns beat me a little to it, is about the septic systems. I would surmise that it would, if, if the plan that they put in front of the selectmen on September 25th is the plan for this build, this property, they had mentioned a 48-bed detox center. I would surmise it's a large septic system. Where on that property would they put that in a building? And from what I understand, talking to businessmen and, and people in the area, the, the septic systems that were on the property didn't operate functioning well enough for the, the small businesses that were there before the building was torn down. So, where in the process does that happen? Is this definitive? Will that be addressed?
At the definitive stage, yeah.
So, my last question is, these, these plan, these, these preliminary plans were submitted to, and the public could see them ahead of time. The definitive plans, will they be?
That'll be the same.
The same? We can see them ahead of time?
Yep.
And when, I'm very naive to definitive plans. I don't, I don't know that. I'm learning as we go here. When, when do you suspect that might be? Is it the end of the month? Is it March? Is it February? Is it, is it, when, when do we think that might be so we can keep everyone informed?
Following the preliminary plan, action by the board, the applicant has seven months to, to submit the definitive plan. I don't think we'll take that long, but we have seven months.
So, my question is, will the, will the public be notified when that next meeting is?
Yeah, be posted just like every other meeting is.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Be no change.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening and happy new year. Frank West, 2 Birchwood Road.
Happy new year, Frank.
Quick question is, I was watching on television, and the gentleman was saying that they'd be requesting certain waivers, that if they weren't granted, that they'd have to go back to the American with Disabilities Act, and there was one other act. And I'm wondering, what types of waivers are they looking for that they could basically use those acts for if you didn't grant them?
I don't think that the two are connected. When I said waivers, I meant that this is, this is a, a plan that we've submitted that complies fully with your rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land. That doesn't mean it's the best thing for the neighborhood in terms of build-out. It, it could be smaller. It could be more discreet. It could be a better design and a better fit. The board has the power to grant waivers under the subdivision control law. We haven't identified which specific ones we want, and we're not going to draw a definitive plan, spend a lot of money to do it, without having a further conversation with the board about what waivers they might entertain. That'll, that'll be something that takes place in the next month, six weeks, something like that.
And one last thing, we got, and again, you know, I know people have kind of beaten the dead horse on the septic, but one comment that I'd like to make is, back in 2005, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we had talked about the possibility of using the Whitfield school site for senior housing. And at that time, the Board of Health Director, Greg Erickson, said that they could go with about 24 units. Now, I don't know what the difference between a senior citizen-type unit and a 48-bedroom facility, what the capacities are, but I know that that time, like I said, Greg said that they would only allow, it was up to 24 units, and they could have a, I'm not sure what the term was, but it's basically an onsite disposal system. I don't know, there was, you know, with its own ability to clean and all. Like I said, I don't know what the, you probably know what the term is, Mike, but again, I just want to make, it just seems odd that, and again, I don't know what the difference is between 24 bedrooms on the Whitfield site, which was three, it's eight-acre site, three acres buildable, versus this site here. I'm not sure of the exact build, building part of the site. So, I just wanted to raise that as a comment. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
Jim, I have one more question. On the definitive plan, do they have to have the uses to finalize the definitive plan? How would you make a definitive plan without knowing what the uses are on the property?
Yeah, I don't know.
We don't have.
Yeah, so, it's a, it's a subdivision plan, so really, it's dealing with the division of the lots. They will have to at some point when they come in for site plan review, which is another, yet another process with the planning board. That will have to show the use and the building.
Parking.
Parking, all of that. So, there's, there's the definitive subdivision, and there's site plan review, two more things that have to happen with this board.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Okay. We good? Anyone else want to say anything? Good. Are you people voting on this tonight? On the preliminary? On the preliminary plan, yes. I, I would like to hear from each member of the reason they're going to vote for or against this, if I could request that. I guess. Again, remember what we're voting on. We're just voting on the fact that the plan meets the zoning. That's all. I understand that, but I would like to know for what reason you're voting for it or against it, each member of the board. We don't have any reason to vote against it. Pardon me? We don't have any reason to vote against it. Oh, you said you were going to vote on it? That's correct. I'd like to know why you're going to vote, for what reason you're going to vote for it or against it. I know you're going to vote. We're going to vote for it because it meets the town zoning. That's, that's all I want to know. If everyone's going to vote for it, that's it. Why, for what reason would someone vote against it? Because it, it doesn't, if it didn't meet. Thank you. I don't need an explanation. Thank you.
One, one quick question. So, this actually just spurred a thought. So, if, in a preliminary plan, all they have to show is that I could fit two buildings in this lot? No consideration whatsoever to parking, what goes with the zoning for that particular lot?
Correct.
So, it could be a five-square foot?
Correct. He's just subdividing the lot and he needs to.
They have to meet lot area, frontage. They have to meet certain dimensional requirements.
Fits the circle in.
Right. So, they fit the cul-de-sac in, they, they create the frontage.
Don't we see anything wrong with that? That I could actually just Mickey Mouse a drawing to divide a lot?
It's not Mickey Mouse. What, what do you mean?
Well, pardon, pardon the.
It's engineer.
I can, I can engineer a drawing.
Okay.
I'm an architecture engineer by, by discipline. I can engineer a drawing with the fault pretense that I'm actually going to put two buildings in there without even meeting the minimum requirements for parking and et cetera and et cetera, et cetera, that are actually necessary if I actually were to build out the two properties.
That'll come into site plan review, so he'll have to verify it then.
Okay. I personally have a lot of concerns, and a lot of them were brought up tonight. You know, the drainage, this sanitary sewer, parking, but we can't make a decision on that right now. And I think, you know, for what the purpose of this meeting tonight, you know, everything is in order.
I get it.
But, you know, you may get to a point in the next phase where it doesn't work because they can't make the sewer work, or because the drainage doesn't work. So, we've got to get to that point.
I, my own opinion, just looking at it, the fault in the whole process is that it's, it's allowed by law to get to this point, and yet with no intent of actually building it out that way for the sole purpose of holding out the zoning. So, at what point do we even have the right to say, even if you were to build two lots and build this out, it wouldn't, it wouldn't even meet the deadline? It wouldn't even meet the regulations that are required by the town? Right? So, this is just basically a step to get it, hold the line, and then when we come back, you know, the plan's going to go away because we're going to go back to the original single lot.
I don't think so.
I'm just bringing up points.
It could stay two lots, but they could build something smaller or something different than maybe they want to build now if certain things don't work, like the sanitary, or this, you know, if the soils.
We don't have, we don't have in front of us a building of 48 units, 48 beds, or whatever the description is. We don't have that in front of us right now.
Okay, thank you.
Do you just follow on that, Jackie Ribeiro?
I mean, it's awful nice letting people speak after we've already.
I'm sorry, but I just have a question off of that. So when they, I'm sorry, Jackie Ribeiro, to Judith Road, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Once it's approved for the subdivision for two lots, when in the process do they say, oh yeah, now we want it to be all one lot? When, when, when does that happen?
Have to start over.
So after the next planning board meeting, after the special permit meeting?
So to get, to get a project approved for this, they have to go through site plan review. So that's when they show their, any building, any parking, any use, and that has to come to this board. So that has to be what they're actually building.
Right. So I guess what the point is, and with Joe as well, isn't this just a waste of time of all of your time, our time, the town's money?
No.
And everybody sitting here because you know they're going to make it all one lot at some point and build one building? I just don't think that's right.
Let my provide comfort to the board to read Broken Stone versus Planning Board of Weston in which the Supreme Judicial Court of the Commonwealth said, it's the plan that you're approving, not the buildings on it. And then even if we showed you tiny buildings today and swapped it out for a giant office building tomorrow, it's the plan you're approving, not the picture, not, not the buildings themselves.
Okay. Good.
Has any, has, in the history of, of the town, has anything ever gotten this far and then not happened?
Oh yeah.
Oh yeah. I mean, I, I don't know. I just.
This is very beginning. Economy changes, things change.
The same developer bought property at 125 Ballardville Street on the corner of Ballardville and 125 and he hasn't built it yet. And that was almost two years ago, so it happens.
Okay, so let's hope.
The site plan review and the board of appeals is what this group wants to pay attention to, not what's going on tonight.
Okay. We're going to move on. So.
I can go over it, I just made all Paul's comments into conditions. But I can read through it if that's.
Have you seen these conditions?
Yeah, and I, I just tracked them along, every one of them was in the town engineer's letter to you.
It's basically his letter turned into conditions.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor? Take a motion to accept these drafted condition as submitted.
So moved?
All in favor? We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just one thing, it would have been helpful tonight if you had a board.
Board, yeah, if they would come next time, come on a board so people could see.
You've got to have something that everybody can see what we're doing.
Call it plans if you need. Landscaping planned when the time comes. If you do ask for any waivers in the site plan review.
Very basic process, preliminary plan is a very basic process.
Thanks, I'll, I'll be in touch with Valerie to find out if there's a convenient night and we might come back to talk about some design waivers.
No, I was just going to say if, if you do any final subdivision review, you're going to ask for waivers. They go on the front page.
Right.
Listed, right up front.
Okay, thank you.
If you could get in the middle of your meeting?
Oh yeah, there'll be.
They didn't sign in tonight like the rest of us did.
I believe they, did you sign in guys?
I didn't sign in, but I introduced myself. Would, would like to know what they were.
Would you sign in?
If everyone could sign in, that would be great. Thank you.
That's all right.
So we are out.
I guess Board of Appeals.
Are we supposed to be endorsing some plans here?
Yeah.
Break them out.
The, the charity basis.
Oh, thank you.
Well, signing the plans first, that takes the most.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So what do we got here, plans for what, 730 Main Street, which ones are?
730 Main Street is where they're putting in the new small prefab building where there was another prefab building. It's pretty much the same footprint, just shrunk in a little bit.
That was the chemical place.
Yeah, uh, what's it called, DSM?
DSM.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Jeff. Valerie's doing an excellent job. You should give her a raise.
That's on camera.
I want one too.
Cheryl on the other hand, I don't know.
You know you're being recorded.
He's here, he just stuck here.
He was supposed to kick me, Cheryl.
I hope this person put them all on the same spot.
Kind of, but not really because of some of the plans yet pieced together, so it's just the best.
He's, he's not too bad though.
No.
Yeah. At least right now I'm saying that too. We should just mix it up on every set. I'll set Cheryl. Michael. Maybe there's something, I was thinking of. One of four and two of five, there's one of five.
I don't think we took all of the floor plan pages.
Yeah, I mean, they might.
No, yeah, I think it's fine. So they took the, the. The right elevations and the right floor plans for us to. Want to take your call?
Actually, wasn't it cold in here? Actually, she asked a good question about the 50 feet.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's from the zone, it's from the zone. I wrote it down. It's kind of weird worded, it's worded weirdly. It's from the, the zone or the property, so you would take it from the zone, I think. Well, it's up, it's up to Al.
No, it's up to Al. If her, if the ZO line's here and her property line's here.
Well, I've gotten different, um.
That's true.
Information about where that line is too. So. We all need to nail that down.
Well, at minimum, it's 50 feet from the property line, it could be 75 feet if the ZO line's.
We're going to have the data test bits for verification.
Interesting, if it's like that.
Will there be a difference on the test?
No, not, not, not really, but. A site plan review will make a difference.
Um, it's that kind of.
Start on this.
Wait, wait, wait. You want to do, we can do release of charity when we sign. We are, we're both. The Engineering Division has reviewed the status of the above referenced project in response to a letter from Dave McHugh dated December 6, 2017, request partial release of charity. The roadway construction work associated with the 81G permit application was inspected by the Engineering Division. While work appears to be complete and is satisfactory, Engineering Division recommends that charity be held by the town until, and has the plan has been submitted to confirm the work adhered to the approved plans. So he doesn't want to release anything. So no motion?
Correct.
112 Marion Street, Engineering Division has reviewed the status of the above referenced project in response to correspondence from CS New House Builders Inc. dated October 6, 2017, requesting full release of charity. We have received the requisite ASB plan and recommend that charity be released and fall to the applicant. How much is, how much is that? Do you know how much that is?
I had given them the notice and they just didn't put it in here.
It was the, um, the last little piece for the ASB, so it was a couple, what, a couple grand?
Okay, I'll take a motion to, uh, for the Engineering Division release of the remaining charity for 112 Marion Street.
So moved.
Favor. That is approved unanimously.
So we've got Board, Board of Appeals left. Carolyn deserved it.
What else we got? We got this, this.
Um, request for release of charity.
Alright, I didn't realize.
Engineering wants the ASB before we release the charity.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I got Jeff's badge.
No.
I forgot, sorry.
Probably thinks you're joking though.
What, then you give it a raise? Alright, what do we got from Board of Appeals, come on.
Okay, so one of the Board of Appeals is the 4th of July festivities at 140 to 50 Middlesex Ave.
Same as it was.
Same as it was. The dates are Friday, June 29th through Monday, the 2nd. And the fireworks are scheduled for the 2nd. Um, the layout is going to be the same it had, as it has been for the past couple of years. On the, yeah, on the Swain Lot. Same layout as they showed last time. And I believe these are all the same kind of rules that, that were used last time too. Um, Fridays, 5 to 10, Saturday, 12 to 10, Sunday, 1 to 9, Monday, 5 to 10. There's a rain date for the fireworks for Tuesday, the 3rd.
All in favor?
Someone? Yeah.
Yeah, so this is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. So recommend approval.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
The one year they did it without the carnival was a disaster, that was two years ago. Let's see, 13?
Do you want to hear another Board of Appeal?
Yeah.
Okay. When everyone's ready.
What's that?
Board of Appeal for 7 Burt Road. The, uh, it's a special permit for groundwater protection district. They would like to, uh, build a 25 by 25 foot addition to their home. They are, so they're only allowed 15% coverage on their lot. They're already at 23.4%.
Without putting on the addition?
Without putting on the addition. With the addition, they're at 25.5%, but they are proposing to infiltrate, um, with an underground infiltration system for the, uh, for the addition. So they'll recharge all of the water that would be running off of the. I don't know how it got, I, I don't, I don't know.
So will we just be increasing their violation here?
Well, they, they will be infiltrating the water that would have gone into the ground on top of that roof. So, um, it's sort of a. It's a wash, yes. Thank you.
Do they need all that pavement though? Is that pavement already there or are they redoing that?
That's already there.
Okay, it seemed like they though.
It's already there.
It's a really big driveway opportunity there.
What's the, the reg, 15%?
15% or 2,500, whichever is greater.
So by them setting it, they're going to be at what they are now?
Yeah, so they mitigate for the new addition roof, they're going to take that water and put it in the ground anyway. So really, the coverage of that ground isn't being, um, felt because they're putting that water back into the ground.
Is there any way they can reduce their overage while they're at it?
You can, you can recommend that to the Board of Appeals, that they try to reduce their impervious.
Put in a little bigger system and try to reduce that a little bit? It's a pretty big addition, 25 by 25, you said?
Mm-hmm, twen, right.
David, what line are you setting on? Four or five?
They're actually dumb, uh, so they would need to do 31 cubic feet, right? For, to account for their addition, they're actually doing 78 cubic feet. So they're doing, you know, two and a half times almost what they would need to do. So they are, they're, they're accounting for more than just their addition.
Reducing total effect.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Okay. So we'll recommend approval to the Board of Appeals. The last Board of Appeal is 34 Andover Street. This one's a little bit more complicated. There's an existing non-conforming garage on the parcel that is. The existing side yard is 18.2 feet from the side lot line, 20 feet's required, so it, it doesn't meet the setback currently. The proposal is to add a second story. So they would be increasing the non-conformity by going up another story with, uh, within the setback. So they, they're required to get a special permit from the Board of Appeals.
So are they actually figuring on top of what they've already got or are they tearing down what they've got and building? I didn't think it said that in there.
I didn't think you were increasing the non-conformity when you're building above from the dimensional setbacks because you're not building an overhead.
You're not technically, but I think anymore.
Well, they do, the, the building inspector considers going up. When you have a non-conforming setback going up with another story, he considers that increasing the non-conformity.
Yeah, I agree.
So they're not going, they're not going closer to the lot line, but they're going up. And it says construct a second floor addition to an existing non-conforming garage, so.
Yeah, and I thought you can only do that by 50% or something. It's the 50% rule.
Well, on top of the 50% rule would be.
If it was, if he, if he had a thousand square foot house and they wanted to go up, they could go up 50% another 500 square feet. Unless you were DM4A, then you could go up another thousand and say 2,000. It's a thousand.
It looks like a 10 by 20 garage.
It is.
Very small.
Does it look okay?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood.
It's a lot, really. Well, 30,000 square feet, you're R10 zone?
Okay, I think it's actually like, I think it's woods along there too. I think it's, I think it's not woods, but it's trees and, you know, a little tree grove on the left side, isn't it?
It's zoned R20? What is the zone?
R20.
Okay, that's why it's not conforming because if it was R10, they'd be fine. The setbacks are okay.
Right. I mean, it's 18.2 when 20's required, it's, it's not, you know, jammed up on the lot line.
I mean, technically you could call it that, that, um, the roof line thing, you know, it's 35 feet, but if you have a pointed roof, you can be above and below, so it's, it's average.
I think it's fine, consistent with what we've done before.
I think so too.
Sure. Good.
They're not claiming the hardship, right?
No, there's no hardship.
Thank you.
Just a special permit. Okay, so then we'll recommend approval. And that's all I've got for Board of Appeals. Minutes.
Or do we have minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
Oh, you know what, I printed them out and I left them in my desk. I printed them out and I left them in my desk.
Can you change anything from what you said on earlier?
Huh?
Can you change anything from what you said on earlier? Oh, I actually got it.
Yay.
But I need to, um, also give you guys a packet so we need you to join me at that time for, um.
What, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, I'm not gonna let the chief say, have you done?
I need everybody. I need everybody to sign the contract and then.
This is, um, acknowledging that you've gotten this packet.
You get each packet, but you need to give me the.
Keep, keep and read the packet.
That's another one.
These are the same thing?
No. Um, two days later, please.
J team.
Yeah, that's it, it's over.
What else do you need to do?
I just need that. And I need you to sign that one.
Yeah, this one.
Oh, you need to print your name.
Oh, I thought you were gonna do all that.
Well, I can, but.
One, two, two zero one eight. I have to say that, uh, it's two seventeen on it.
Off of this one, too, Cheryl.
Thank you.
That reminds me, I'm probably doing the conflict of interest law test this year among opposite years. So then I send my copy over to Sharon so she knows who we're current.
Thank you, you're on your off.
People are gonna miss me.
I just don't feel like taking a board trial.
Thank you.
Where's this one?
Thank you.
It's the conflict of interest.
Oh, man, I have a lot of conflict.
Yeah. What ride do you use?
She's, she's getting her other one.
I'm slow, I'm sorry.
She was signing plans.
I'm not a speed writer. Nope. You do your paperwork stat too.
You're gonna miss me.
Sure, you, you're leaving there. Minutes?
Oh, minutes, what am I doing with my minutes? They look good to me.
I read the board. It says drafted.
Minutes proved. No form A's tonight, right?
Right.
Zero.
So we'll draft a, um.
I feel like that's what we did today.
We'll draft, uh, as, an article for Shelley for town meeting.
For Shelley?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else we wanted added and we missed?
Uh, we're gonna do the signs.
All signs, yeah.
And then those two corrections that we went over last time. I'll put it all together again.
And we were talking about some definitions?
Yeah, we need to kind of.
Make sure they're all encompassing.
Well, start putting definitions in the bylaw, really, because we have like a few and that's it, so.
We need to just make sure we have more.
We certainly don't have them all, but we can chip away.
So what, what, you think he's gonna submit definitive site plans?
I don't know, um. I don't know. I don't know what their timing, I mean, within the next seven months, they'll submit.
But the butters would be notified, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
The butters will be notified, uh, noticing the paper.
Have you been putting, have you been putting the plans on the line for people or?
Uh, no, we did not.
No.
Is there means for you to do that?
We could tr- we could try.
We send, we do email them to people when they call, like that woman Jackie Ribero had asked, so she had them emailed to her right away.
And they can always come in, anyway.
Yeah.
We can try to put them online.
I think that, that, I don't think a lot of people even, you know, look for, like, they'll, they'll ask us and we'll email them PDF files.
So.
Okay.
People that came before us look three sixty-two. Someone over there said they bought the property the same day they submitted the plans, is that? I didn't understand that.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't know it was for sale, so.
Why would we, why would we know that?
Exactly.
I don't think that.
No.
You guys got anything else you wanna talk about, anybody? Ronnie, you good?
Yep, ready to go home, go to bed.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. So, yeah, all in favor?
Okay, we're good.
Thank you.